Does that mean we're good once you do, or you got a delay? All right, yeah, let us know that when that's, that's good, good. All right, great. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Township Council Meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a day after, but happy Valentine's Day, everyone, yesterday. Hopefully, had a great one. And welcome to the council meeting today. This is a conference meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel thirty-four and is streaming live on Montclair TV thirty-four YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can and will be rebroadcast. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in the annual notice of the meeting schedule as set forth in Resolution R twenty-one two ten, adopted by the Town Council at its conference meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, advertised in the official newspaper on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, posted on the bulletin board outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted. In addition, copy of the revised annual notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the township clerk. With that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To their public.
And one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Cummings.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock.
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Present.
Counselor Russo.
Present.
Counselor Schlegel.
Here.
Counselor Yacobalis.
Present.
Mayor Spiller.
Present, thank you. Next, we have public comment in an effort to minimize exposure to COVID nineteen to remain social, maintain social distancing practices. This is February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. And further meetings until the pandemic is over will only be available to the public remotely. Those who wish to participate now during public comment should dial to four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. When asked to enter an access code, please enter two three three two nine eight two two six four three, then press pound. When asked to enter an attendee number, please simply press pound. When asked, state your name and then press pound. The administrator will say when it's the caller's turn to speak, and the caller will then hear two beeps. That time, the caller will then have an opportunity to make his or her comments. Mr. Stafford, Mr. Fanna, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First would be caller with the number starting two zero one five four three. It is your turn to comment. Two zero one five four three. Please state your name for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Anne Lappel. I've been a citizen of Montclair for forty-five years and have been a member of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee for over ten years. It's been my honor to serve the community as a member of the SCAC for over a decade. What the SCAC members have tried to do in partnership with the township was not for the benefit of those already at the age of seventy-five. What we have stressed from the beginning is that it is the responsibility of our public policy to anticipate the future. In a few years, one out of ten people in our society will be over the age of sixty. Most of the current council members will be among this generation of third-agers if you're not already there. If you want to age in place in Moncler, our community, you need to start your preparation now. Even today, there are more Montclair residents within this demographic than there are children in the public schools. And even now, in two thousand and twenty-two, this council has not found a way to increase the budget allocation to senior services, which I might add has been frozen at the same five hundred thousand dollars for many years. And that is five hundred thousand dollars in a budget of over ninety-two million dollars. Do the math, and you will conclude, as I have done, that there is a lack of equity in these allocations. Seniors do not want Montclair to expend lots of money on them, but they do want them to start to spend money to anticipate the future. For example, we pay taxes, we vote, we volunteer, and we represent the collective history of this community. Yet we do not see a social worker that has been hired by the township to be available to help people as they age in place. We have not seen the council show leadership to secure a community center for everyone, which would include seniors. And we have not, over the years, found that you have been listening to the forecasts that we have given you through surveys, white papers, and presentations. A key tenant of an age-friendly community is engaging stakeholders at every opportunity. Take no action, and you will drive more older residents to Florida, North Carolina, and Tennessee. We pay in New Jersey a very high tax burden. When will you start to listen? I am sorry that, as of today, eighty percent of the members of this SCAC, including myself, have decided that we can no longer invest our effort and our energy into surveys, white papers, policy recommendations that fall on deaf ears. As of today, I have resigned from the SCAC, and I am really sorry.
Next would be caller with the number starting nine one seven two seven zero. It is your turn to comment. Nine one seven two seven zero, please, for the record.
Yes, hello?
State your name.
Hi, it's Evelyn Leonard.
And please keep your comments to three minutes.
It's Evelyn Leonard. I'm calling regarding the rent control. After months of hearings reviewing the need for rent control in Montclair, and the council carefully drafted an ordinance, which was balanced for tenants and landlords and the community at large. The landlords' last-minute objections protracted litigation and demand for significant changes are contrary to what Montclair stands for as a community. It's disappointing that it's come to this. I urge the council to pass a fair and balanced rent control ordinance that is in place before the expiration of the rent freeze on March thirty-first. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting nine seven three six one nine. It is your turn to comment. Nine seven three six one nine, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. So this is Ahava Felicidad here, Tenants Organization of Montclair. We are asking that you extend the rent freeze ordinance. Yesterday is February fifteenth, but it is necessary to get this rolling so that you know we are asking that you extend the rent freeze ordinance until our rent control ordinance is implemented. So extending the rent freeze is the right thing to do while there is still no rent control in Montclair, New Jersey. We have an approved ordinance from April seventh of two thousand and twenty. I would also like to make note for the public. We are posting our events to Montclair Patch. They will also go out and email blast to our membership. And you can check the Toome Advocacy Facebook, which we do not crowd with a lot of posts, just what's necessary. Basically, our next meeting, the rent freeze moratorium flyer is up. That's also been and still being distributed in the community, in buildings and houses, your multifamilies, your one-family rentals, your two-family rentals, your three-family rentals, flyers on our website. So I want to take a moment as well to highlight a recent tenant call. Tara over on Francis Place, who thankfully is protected under the rent freeze ordinance, reached out to us, and you should be expecting a letter and or email from her about an unconscionable rent increase that we've now prevented because of the freeze and her reaching out to Toome. Her two thousand five hundred and fifty dollar a month, twenty-five fifty a month, three-bedroom in a two-family, again, not exempt under the, under the freeze, was, the house was sold. So the new owner came to present her with some interesting paperwork, modeling a four-bedroom apartment to try to basically change her three-bedroom with a closet into a four-bedroom, and request that she pay thirty-nine hundred dollars a month in rent from twenty-five fifty. This is just one example of many because she'd also talked to neighbors and has seen this happening in town, has been in Montclair over ten years. Want you to know that she's a Montclair State grad, and so is her mom, and they actually love it here. But that she will not be paying that thirty-nine hundred dollars up to fifty, it's close to fifty-six percent more. It is not her fault that a new owner bought a house and decided to increase the rent in that way.
And that sound was your time expiring, so please do us the service of concluding your comments.
Oh, there's the timer, too. So it is unconscionable. We want you guys to know, like everyone to know out there. Please talk and share to your neighbors. She also helped out a neighbor who was a sixty-seven-year-old senior who was paying thirteen seventy-five and was requested to pay nineteen fifty. So just so you know, neither of them are going to be paying that unconscionable rent increase because you all have rights. Thank you. Have a great night.
Mr. Mayor and Manager, can I just say a word? I want to.
Mr. Counselman Russo.
I want to thank you, Ahava, for bringing us these examples and for all your hard work, you know. I, I really know there's a lot of folks that the tenants that you're talking about that have a Montclair State connection. I know them. You know, here we are, having people come in town, buy a piece of property, and try to jack up the rent by fifteen or fourteen hundred dollars, falsely maybe saying that the apartment is a four-bedroom when it's three. It's just fraud. It's consumer fraud, which I fought as a consumer lemon law director for the state years ago. It's misrepresentation, lack of disclosure. All these consumer fraud issues apply to what's happening to a lot of tenants with, in our rent control. I'd like to explain to people again, the caller right before you said, you know, we should pass something. Well, we passed it a year and a half ago, two years almost. We just can't implement it because of a lawsuit, because of the, I'd say, uncooperative attitude of some of the landlords, not all landlords, of course, but some landlords and people who are from outside Montclair, who like to go from town to town, disrupting towns. And I've seen it in Asbury Park, in Neptune, at the shore. And these are folks, same folks coming here, trying to disrupt us and destroy a good effort, not perfect, but good, to have rent control at the previous council, and this council has tried to uphold. So thank you again to Toome and to you, Ahava, and Tony Martin and others. And I really feel badly, I'm glad you did something to help those tenants, but we've got to do as much as possible to get this rent control issue resolved. And I wish that the landlords would come to the table and do that. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting nine seven three six nine eight. It is your turn to comment. Nine seven three six nine eight, please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
Hi, my name is Diane Herbst, and I have been a Montclair resident for over twenty years. After the resolution to create a permanent skate park at the Ran tennis courts was passed at the last council meeting, without any public comment from residents prior to the vote, there have been a few things that trouble me here. Out of basic courtesy to your taxpaying residents who show an interest in their town, the decision to put the vote on before public comment was allowed makes, makes a mockery of the whole idea of civic participation. The potential spending of hundreds of thousands, if not over a million dollars of taxpayer money on this project is incredibly disturbing, which is why we needed this full discussion, which we did not have. As I've already mentioned, the town paid over a quarter million dollars in two thousand and seventeen to have these courts redone as tennis courts. And according to several people and articles in the Montclair Local, taxpayers could expect to be paying for a third of the cost of this skate park, which builders told the Montclair Local would cost between one point five million dollars and three million dollars. So that means the taxpayers of Montclair could be spending five hundred thousand to a million dollars to create a skate park in the exact same spot likely for use by many non-Montclair residents. This doesn't make sense, especially after hearing from the first caller about a lack of funding for seniors. And just regarding the lack of informing the tennis community and getting input from us, Mayor Spiller's comment to the Montclair Local that we had adequate notice on the details of what would happen to our courts is disingenuous at best. He said, according to the Montclair Local, quote, "That those in opposition had the opportunity to be heard at a January fourth conference meeting when resolutions for the following monthly regular meeting were listed as discussion items only," unquote. Prior to that meeting, there was one line on the agenda that read, quote, "Resolution in support of the establishment of a permanent skate park," unquote. That's it. There were no other details. That doesn't constitute fair notice to the people in the taxpaying tennis-playing community. Shortly before that January fourth meeting, I found out from a source that there were plans for a resolution to be read to take away the remaining two Ran courts. I was the only person to call in from the tennis community, but there were many skateboarders and their parents calling in who apparently had better notice than tennis players did. During the meeting, and only after public comment, when the resolution was read aloud, was it first revealed that the council planned to take away all four of the Ran courts for a skate park. The council's acceleration of this discussion in the dead of winter, when the outdoor tennis community is obviously not active, lacked reasonable notice. No final resolution should have been discussed, let alone voted on, and voted on without fair notice before allowing us to speak. The fact that this was rushed through without any meaningful discussion really makes me wonder if we missed a real opportunity here for a more sensible solution to put the skate park in a different location where both the tennis players and skaters could be accommodating. It's very disappointing.
And that noise was your time expiring, so please do us the service of, including your comments.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Next would be caller with the number starting two zero one four two four. It is your turn to comment. Two zero one four two four, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Ron Simoncini from the Montclair Property Owners Association. Like to address some of the comments I've heard recently about the willingness of property owners to adopt rent control and to enter into a dialogue to resolve the issues that we have with the municipality. The first issue is, from the very moment that the municipality announced that it intended to adopt the rent control ordinance, we said we will cooperate with that. We said we believe that you are correct, that tenants need protection from displacement and egregious rent control, and egregious rent increase. We said that from the first day. We pointed out that the ordinance had some substantial flaws, and that if three simple amendments could be made, we would support the ordinance. We never got a dialogue. We were thwarted at every turn for expressing our right as a voter in a referendum. The municipalities had a finding against it that allows us to seek part of our legal fees as a result of civil rights violations. I think there's two basic issues here. The first is, just because you're saying something and defending it by saying that you're doing it on behalf of tenants, doesn't mean you're doing the right thing. There's property owners, there's homeowners, there's tenants, and there's other citizens of the community, all of whom need to be considered in these decisions. So the righteousness of protecting tenants, which we happen to agree with, has nothing to do with supporting the behavior of the municipality through this thing. Now, a few weeks ago, the municipality came and said, you guys should work this out, and we sat and tried to work it out. We came up with an excellent version of rent control that we advocated for, only stating that there were three provisions in it that were unconstitutional. And if they could become constitutional, we would support the findings and the compromises that were made between the municipality, tenant representatives, and landlord representatives. All we're looking for is for the law to be constitutional at this point, based on the negotiation that all sides participated in. But later, the tenant group came back and said, it's not enough for us. Even though when the municipality and its representatives were involved, it was enough. That's called being retraded. Nobody likes it. And nobody likes being retraded with unconstitutional provisions and inordinates that will never survive court challenges. So all we want to do here is let you guys know. If you just make the law constitutional that we negotiated on January ninth, we'll accept it.
Sir, that sound was your time expiring. Please do us the service of concluding your comments.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to just make a comment to the council right now and just remind them that the rent control ordinance is a matter that's under litigation. And unfortunately, it's not something that we can discuss in open public meeting, those specific issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next would be caller with the number starting two zero one five seven five. It is your turn to comment. Two zero one five seven five, please, for the record, state your name. Do, do your best to keep your comments to three.
Yes, yes, this is Mitchell Khan, Vice President of the New Jersey Tenants Organization. The Tenants Organization of Montclair is an affiliated organization. I've been asked by the Montclair Housing Commission, the NAACP, and the Tenants Organization of Montclair to represent them in negotiations with the Montclair Property Owners Association. The objectives of both of our organizations was to avoid a costly and divisive referendum on the rent control ordinance. To that extent, we negotiated for over two months. And as Mr. Simoncini pointed out, we came up with a draft of an ordinance. But what he doesn't say is that almost all the concessions that were made were significant concessions on our part. And I don't want to go through every one of them tooth and nail because I, I only have three minutes. But the three things that they are objecting to and raising constitutional issues about concern the enforcement of the ordinance. Okay, we are not going, everything that we conceded was based on the fact that we wanted strong enforcement mechanisms. Now, we could not come to an agreement. It was our understanding that if we couldn't come to an agreement, that this was going to go to a referendum. And we believe that we haven't come to an agreement because the landlords want to keep drawing this out. They don't want this to come to conclusion. They don't want rent control. And if they have want of control, they want the weakest possible version ever that they can get. So therefore, we are urging the council to certify the petition, to move toward referendum. And if you would like us to rejoin into negotiations with the landlords on this, we would be glad to do so. But we want a time limit that a certification of the referendum would provide. Any agreement that we will give to the council, we guarantee will pass constitutional muster. This idea that they are going to challenge everything on constitutional basis or threaten legal fees on the town or threaten to litigation on the freeze is just a method to intimidate the council. So we urge you to let the stakeholders continue to negotiate with the Montclair Property Owners Association. And if we cannot come to an agreement, let this go to referendum. What we've offered the landlords is far more generous than what the ordinance that you passed gives them, and in fact, is one of the most generous landlords, generous rent control ordinance in the state, state of New Jersey in the benefits that it gives to landlords. For them to walk away from this is like, is like kicking a gift horse. So we urge you to certify the petitions, to move, move toward referendum, and let's see what happens. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and Manager.
Mr. Russo.
Yeah, I know, as Paul, our new interim town attorney, has said, we can't talk about any specifics, and I was only talking generalities before with Ahava. But again, I want to thank Mitch Khan also for coming in to help get things settled. Because for two months now, I know he's been working very hard with the clergy and ACP, with the folks who want this, not just tenant organization, but housing advocates. All the people who are concerned are religious leaders. We want Montclair to be affordable and to be a place that people can stay in, and particularly seniors, you know. Anne Lappel, my good friend, was talking about Did Nothing. Two years ago, Councilwoman Baskerville and Mayor Spiller and I all proposed rent control, and the council almost unanimously supported what we did. And it was a compromise with various provisions that none of us really loved, but we put it together. And this is the former council now that did the best they could. And we've tried to now implement it for two years with the landlord group fighting us. And I've got to say, this, these comments by Mr. Simoncini, I'm a, a person who's owned property and spent a lot of time at the Jersey Shore in Monmouth County, my second home. Neptune is a town diverse like Montclair. It has instituted rent control for seven, eight, ten years, has a wonderful rent control board, has a former council member who cheers it. They have no problems at all. They have everybody's complaints taken care of, rent cap complaints. The only problem they've had is Mr. Simoncini has come into the town and tried to do all sorts of things to disrupt their rent control. And just this last year, the same thing you'll see in the paper in Monmouth County, the same disruption in Asbury Park, which passed a rent control ordinance and did a moderate rent control ordinance that the council approved. And still, he's down there fighting them. So I don't like when things are said that are not truthful. That's my hallmark of my life, my seventy-four years. So I'm here to just say thank you to my former colleague, Counselor Baskerville. Thank you to Mayor Spiller at the time, who was a council member. Thank you to Mayor Jackson and other council members who supported this, Deputy Mayor Herlock, Counselor Schlegel. I was always advocating this from the time I was mayor twenty years ago. And it's never passed the referendum. I would like to see us avoid a big fight in town, a referendum. We just had a big fight over school elections. Let's try to get this settled. I want to thank Mitch Khan again for trying his best, making a lot of concessions, as he said. This is actually better for the landlords than what we passed. But if these folks from outside Montclair want to keep coming in and making a crusade of stopping us from having an affordable town, a diverse town, a town which tries to do things. And what I'm saying about seniors is this was beneficial to seniors. We passed something that said two and a half percent increase for seniors. That's a lot of accomplishment for seniors, Anne. So let's just do what's right, okay, folks? Let's do what's right, not fight, but do what's right for Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Russo. I'll just simply add to that. I, I think you're spot on, and that, that is absolutely why I asked the, both the tenants and landlord side to come and sit down and engage in those conversations. I think as, as Mitch noted, moving forward in those, I will only note, I think anyone can sense and, and smell this out when you're doing that simple test. You can't come on here and say you've worked out a deal that everyone can agree to, but the, the tenants didn't want to agree to it, and town can't agree to it. That, that's not coming up with an agreement that everyone can live with. So I think the charge always was come up with something that can be agreed to, or we passed an ordinance and we go to referendum. And we let the voters decide if we should maintain our socioeconomic and other diversity in this town by having rent control. And those are the choices we're faced with. I think we do hear the request from Mitch here, and we will, you know, look at that and move forward as appropriate. So, but, you know, I will certainly, and I know we had our council before, and I know strong supporters in this council support the diverse in this township and support having rent control to help protect everyone, maintain Montclair as an affordable place to live. With that, Mr. Stafford.
Thank you, sir. Next would be caller with the number starting nine seven three eight two zero. It is your turn to comment. Nine seven three eight two zero, please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
Good evening. This is Tony Martin. I'm with the Tenants Organization of Montclair. As most of you know, I have been working on this for quite a while. I, I've also been privy to these talks, these attempts at compromise. We really thought we were making headway with these landlords, and then suddenly, Mr. Simoncini appears again with his cries of unconstitutionality. I want to focus on one aspect of what he is now claiming is unconstitutional in what was agreed to in the original ordinance and not debated in the recent talks. And that is the two point five percent cap for seniors, even though the cap on rent increases under rent control for the general public would be. for the general public would be for about 4%. So he says it's unconstitutional. However, there are half dozen other towns in New Jersey operating with special rates for seniors. There are other states, in fact, where that is being done. Now, I suppose they could, the landlords could use their continuous legal muscle to go and fight this all the way to some high court to try and prove that it is unconstitutional. Is that what they want to be doing with their money? Fighting to take away a little extra protection for people over 65 in this community? The whole point of this rent control effort is to maintain our diverse population, diverse in every way, including our seniors, many of whom have contributed a great deal to this town and who consider it home and want to not leave. It's been our slogan from the beginning. We want to see you stay Montclarians. Thank you, council, for grasping so clearly the issues here, despite the fact that half truths continue to be promulgated by Mr. Simonsini, who is the hired public relations man for the Property Owners Association. Good night. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 718791. 718791, it is your turn to comment. Please state your name for the record. Comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Hi, my name is John Sherman. I've lived in the Third Ward for over 20 years. Going to try to keep this brief. But I think what's obvious from everyone who's called in, there's a, there's a need for a couple of things in our town. Maybe most important, that pretty much everyone, I think, can agree on is a level of transparency that we don't have at this point. I am also a member of Montclair Beyond Policing, and I have many thoughts about that. But I think a first step for us as a town is to make it more democratic, make it less secretive. I think from my perspective, if we took a fraction of what's in the police budget and put it towards other community efforts, the seniors, for one thing, is really obvious from that woman's call, called in. For crying out loud, there's plenty of money in this town for a really nice skate park and plenty of tennis courts, folks. I think we need to have a serious discussion about our priorities, and it needs to start with an effort at least on the council to make the entire budget process, the website, the agendas, everything, more user friendly, more transparent, so people can truly participate in this government. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973744. 973744, it is your turn to comment. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Luella Dudley, and I am, was the co-chair of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. On January 18, 2020, the council adopted Resolution 2217, reorganizing Senior Citizens Center, Committee, rather. The resolution requires all current members of SCAC to reapply for future membership, even those whose term has not expired. In any government agencies, if your term has not expired, you stay on board until your term runs out. We were not given this courtesy. We were all told to resign and reapply. It is with sadness and great contemplation that I, along with my committee, resigned from the SCAC Committee. We were not given the opportunity to meet with or have discussions with representatives from the council to discuss the work we have done on behalf of our senior citizens, nor we ask about the diversity of our group. I asked Lori about the reasoning for the impending changes. She did not give me an explanation, but said, we are looking at the committee with fresh eyes, whatever that means. No further explanation was given. The SCAC has volunteered our time and efforts for many years, working towards establishing an age-friendly community, working in partnership for over the years with Division of Senior Services. We undertook responsibility for timely and important information distribution, surveys, and annual senior programs, senior realm of programs, to name a few. Although the council does not want us to be advocates, we, the older population of Montclair, our advocacy will not be hampered, and we will continue to raise our voices for the needs of Montclair's older adult population. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Manager.
Excuse me, Councilman, if I may, actually, just because I was actually referencing that. I do feel a need to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
And then we'll go to Councilmember Russo.
And I hope Ms. Dudley is listening still, having, you know, just called in and that the other members who have taken the steps. And I feel like there's been perhaps a gross misunderstanding, but I think I was very clear in a deep appreciation for the work that was ongoing. What I said at the time of me participating at the SCAC meeting, that was probably right in conjunction with the conversation, and then in conversations with the then president or chair since, was that we sought to, and as I explained, Councilor Cummings and I had been doing a review of some of the bodies to which we're beginning with the advisory committees, looking for anything that we might bring some consistency across different bodies and really to round out participation. It was not meant to limit participation, but to increase it. What we did through the resolution she cited was to bring representation from different parts and to ask that all the members would participate through, some at large and some through organizational or other affiliations, such as participants at the Wally Choice Center, participation at the mill, either a volunteer or as a participant, someone who lives in each of the four township senior houses. So it was necessary to reapply to understand, and I know I explained this at the time, so I'm sorry if it wasn't clear to everybody there, but the idea was by filing out the new form, we would understand where we could apportion your representation, you and any other individuals, or whether someone could be appointed as an at-large role. And we really saw this as an expansion. So if this is in any way a misunderstanding on your part, we would welcome back people to fill out the form. We are finalizing the form. It has taken a little longer than we might have thought it would. But we are making sure that we're going to be able to have folks demonstrate, not just for this committee, but for other committees and other bodies, some of their, again, in this case, representation that would, their affiliations that would bring around full representation onto the revised SCAC. And so we, I know I specifically said, we respectfully request that you serve in holdover capacity because that is a very commonly applied practice, both at the state level, at local government level, that people continue to serve till such time as they may be reappointed. And that I very explicitly requested and with appreciation for those who would choose to do that. And there are two members who have chosen to remain on and we're appreciative of them and all of you for your service. But I do believe there has been some level of misunderstanding, at least pursuant to what I just heard. Thank you.
Russo, did you have anything additionally, or are you good?
Just a quick point. Luella is a neighbor of mine. I'm going to co-visit her and talk to her about this. I'm asking Luella and all the others who've resigned to please come back or to be reconsidered. Nobody wants you, nobody's telling you to quit. Nobody told you had to resign. Nobody told anybody they had to reapply to be on. But we did do a new form that's going to capture all the activity of everybody who wants to be on all our boards. And all of our boards are going to be consistently reformed so that they work better. And Senior Citizen SCAC was the first one we got done because we wanted everybody to get reappointed. So there's a new form. It's going to be up on board. People can apply if anybody wants to be on Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, which I and Lori are liaisons to with Councilman Jacobellis. Please, we want you to be participants. We want to have a diverse board that represents the whole town. Unfortunately, over the years, things get out of whack. It's, there's three people on the SCAC board that are right from the same building, and that's not right either. So I apologize for misinterpretation by anybody, but I'm the senior citizen on the council, 74 right now. And I'm asking you all to rethink what you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Next would be caller with the number starting 862202. It is your turn to comment. 862202, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Yes, my name is James Easton. I've been a member on this board for over 10 years. And the first part about it is that when you talk about a diverse group, our group is diverse. We are from the Wally Choice Center. We have members from, let's just say it this way, a lot of people who live in some of these senior buildings don't even participate. I mean, I know you're trying to get a lot of people to come out from the senior buildings, but I think you need to know and find out how many people even vote in a municipal election from our senior buildings. We have, we had a very diverse group during the time of COVID, to pass this type of a thing to where you had people to reapply. My term wasn't even out and over. I just thought it was not the right thing to do. So I'm not going to waste your time, but in a sense, like I said, to be an advisory committee, I can tell you how many people have actually, how many of the committee people, council people have come to our meetings and met with any of us? That's the question I have to answer, you council people. That's all I have to say.
Been doing it for years, James. Been doing it for years. Bob Russo.
Next would be caller with the number starting 917744. It is your turn to comment. 917744, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
My name is Frank Mills, Bob, and I'm one of the people who resigned from SCAC. Let me say that I have two aspects to my membership. First of all, I'm the oldest member in terms of years. I'm 85. But I'm also the newest member in terms of residency in Montclair. I've moved here just four years ago, well, four years and one month ago, to be precise. And one of the things I was struck by was that there was no senior center here, no senior citizen center. And I inquired about it and found that there were a lot of people here who looked upon that as a real deficiency and were trying to solve that problem. And they thought that it had gotten solved finally with the United Way Building, the Mills Building. And I entered in with that to help try to plan that out and achieve it and, of course, was disappointed when the township was not able to go through with it. But I was just disappointed. I wasn't really enraged. There were people around me who were enraged and still are because they felt that they had made a lifelong, some of them, and many years for others, investment in this town, and they were not receiving a return on their investment. Well, in the absence of a bricks and mortar senior citizen center, some of us started a, what's called a virtual senior citizen center, one that's linked to the internet. And that came along rather fortuitously because it started just at the time of the COVID pandemic. And we were able to keep some amount of contact going among seniors through that method. And I know that it's going to have a future like that. But the longer range need for a bricks and mortar facility is, I think, demonstrable. Our older citizens, you know, the stripping of advocacy from SCAC made it seem like it was simply a facade of age friendliness without any real power or real influence. And all of this is, I'm just saying, we need to connect the dots here. There's been a lot of disappointment. There's been a lot of feelings of betrayal even. And I don't say this so much for my own self, but I can observe it and hear it in the voices and statements of the people that, in my demographic. I think that, too, that, you know, we all ought to consider that this demographic is a growing one in terms of the percentage of the population here and throughout the country.
Sir, that noise you may have heard was your time concluding, so please sum up your comments for us.
My comments can be summed up in that I think that we have a real problem of human relations here, and I think the, I think the council needs to direct its attention to that and to some solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be caller with the number starting 973747. It is your turn to comment. 973747, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Yes, my name is William Scott. I'm the Chair of the Montclair Housing Commission and also the co-chair of the Montclair NAACP Housing Committee. I just want to thank Mitch Khan for being involved in the township of Montclair since we had our universal rent control forum back in 2018. I also want to thank Toni Martin and Ahava, fully dad, the president and vice president of the Tenants Organization for continuing this fight to get rent control in the township of Montclair. This is a 40-year battle. This is a battle that we have lost so many seniors, African-American, people of color through the massive gentrification in this township, the outrageous market rate, prices that rents have been flourishing in this town for decades. This rent control ordinance that I have been a part of, at the table, trying to negotiate with the Property Owners Association of Montclair, absolutely has to be passed. There is no reason for the property owners to continue to threaten legal action in calling elements of the ordinance that we've gone through. There's 16 elements in this ordinance, 16 elements. We went through every single phase of it. There is nothing that is unconstitutional. If the property owners want to single out a provision, and then specifically the provision for the seniors in the township of Montclair to have substantial support for a provision in the rent control to better extend their living livelihood in Montclair, and they want to take that to court, when there are other towns in the state of New Jersey and in the country, yes, it is a bullying tactic. But again, I've been a part of this process. I am the landlord, and I support the rent control ordinance. I have my children and my grandchildren, I'm four generations in Montclair, and I absolutely stand behind this rent control ordinance. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 646441. It is your turn to comment. 646441, please, mute your listening device. Please mute your listening device.
My phone just died.
State your name for the record.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, my name is David Greenbaum. I'm a resident of Montclair, ninety-one Lloyd Road. And a resident, uh, since nineteen sixty-six, on and off. Um, the most recent town council meeting, a vote was taken in advance of public comment. To have taken a vote in advance of hearing the views and the opinions of the residents of the town to inform those making the decision is unconscionable. It sets a very bad precedent. It shows a willful, uh, choice to omit and dismiss those who have something to contribute to the community in terms of their voices. So I just want to make it clear for the record that in the future, a vote is held in advance of public comment. Uh, this is something to be avoided. And it's something that all residents of Montclair should be very much aware of and be concerned about, a setting a very dangerous precedent. On the second issue relating to the very vote, we discussed the skateboard park and its location and its viability. It ran, at that meeting, I made the comments after the vote, that I felt it to be a very poor judgment, very unsound thinking on the part of the town council to choose to eliminate a capital improvement of the existing tennis courts that have been recently restored, an amenity that serves the broad members of the community at all ages, children through seniors. To dismiss the needs of that community when they're at the scarce, it's a scarce resource, uh, without any consideration of replacement of those courts and the capacity those courts provide is short-sighted and improvident. Uh, there are multiple locations in the town that are suitable as an alternate location. And I implore you to make a better, more sound, long-term decision. And I am a supporter of the skateboard park. But I feel very strongly that it should not come at the expense of four tennis courts. The very same families that wish to skateboard, have children to skateboard, those same families may wish to play tennis together. And oftentimes, it's impossible to get a tennis court on a weekend. And that doesn't have anything to do with economic, uh, capacity. It has to do with just families in the community and it's a basic community amenity. And it should not be removed without consideration. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting two, zero, one, nine, five, three. Two, zero, one, nine, five, three. It is your turn to comment. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Hi, this is Ellie Baglett. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I grew up here and I brought my family back here so I could raise my children here. And I hope to stay here. When I retired three years ago, I enthusiastically joined the board of SCAC. I was really impressed by the town's, you know, giving us an opportunity to expand the, the platforms for participatory, participatory democracy. You know, these advisory committees are a way to engage local citizens, taps into our commitment to society and the greater good. And I worked diligently with this group of amazing people for the last three years. But we've seen much of our passion negated most recently. And I, I'm not going to rehash. I know a lot of my colleagues have already called in and expressed some of the issues that are upsetting to us. But one thing I do want to make clear is that this resignation is not simply about now we have to reapply, which I think Bob said we don't, but we were told that we do have to reapply. Uh, or advocacy versus advisory. It's just the straw that broke the camel's back at this point. It's about an overall question of the inequity afforded to seniors. Because the fact is that seniors, that's the history of this town. I grew up here and I know there are generations of Montclarians here. And that's the heart. That's, that's what makes Montclair so unique and special. And we're a stable taxpaying base. And we have a, a cadre of committed volunteers who have time and energy to put into this town. So it, it is with regret that we have resigned. But we see that the best and most effective way we can help the seniors in our community is through our own efforts. So. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Next would be caller with the number starting nine, seven, three, seven, four, six. Nine, seven, three, seven, four, six. It is your turn to comment. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
This is Gail Abramowitz. Um, I've been a member of SCAC for about five and a half years. I've been, um, a resident of Montclair for twenty-six. I do not have children. I have been paying taxes, high taxes for twenty-six years, have not expected much from the town. But as I aged, I thought that the town would have some, uh, resources of me as they have for young families. Um, the resolution reorganizing the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee is just the last straw. Um, it's just the most flagrant dismissal of, uh, SCAC's input into the town. Um, people have forgotten that when we needed a new driveway at Edgemont House, no one asked any of us. They, they could have come to SCAC and asked us, um, how we feel about it. Cause the design does not work for seniors at all, having seniors park on a curve as they have to do. But no one asked us. Um, we've been trying to get a, a brick and mortar senior center for years. And, uh, over the last ten years, we've done all kinds of studies and, uh, applied for grants. We finally found an excellent location, the Mill Building. We were sure that that would be our senior and community center. And at the eleventh hour, that was dismissed. Um, and there are many, many other things. Uh, transportation, uh, there was a recent change in senior citizen transportation. But nobody told the seniors about it. Nobody discussed it with us. And, uh, and the last thing I want to mention is we recently got a new Director of Senior Services in town. Well, why was not the SCAC, the advisory committee, um, introduced to the candidates and asked for input about how we might feel about that person, whoever they might be? Not saying the person's good or bad, but why wasn't our input important? That is the issue, that our input has become unimportant to the town. And we feel we can be more beneficial to the senior community working outside of the town council. And I'm awfully sorry to resign, but that's where I feel we have to be at this time. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting nine, seven, three, seven, four, four. It is your turn to comment. Nine, seven, three, seven, four, four. Please, for the record, state your name. Mute your listening device and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Susan Craig. Uh, and until, uh, February the fourteenth, I was a member of the SCAC board and the Chair, Co-Chair of the committee. And I, um, want to echo what my colleagues have said, um, our disappointment in breaching this point. And I want to reflect on, um, the aspect that we are having the council, the, uh, the board having to reapply for the positions in which, uh, we've served, some of us as long as five and six years. The, um, presence of volunteers and dedicated volunteers is very special, um, in this community and very difficult to, um, form a group that is as dedicated as this one has. We've put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. And beyond that, we represent the diversity of this community. Um, we're members, we're volunteers, we've participated in civic organizations as well as social organizations. We're active in our, um, houses of worship and other activities. We're renters and owners and homeowners, condo owners, co-op owners, um, all areas of the, all areas of the housing stock within Montclair. Um, I know that my neighbor, Mr. Russo, has commented on the group of us who live in the same building. Um, notwithstanding the fact that they were all neighbors, we are all hardworking neighbors, um, and, and have worked hard for the senior community. In this, in your effort to bring fairness and balance to SCAC, this, you know, the, um, this resolution that was passed fails to recognize its members were there and balanced, accurately representing the demographics of Montclair. This is, um, to, to our disappointment that the council has not known us and didn't spend the time to ask us who we were and what we had been doing. Um, with the acceptance of this limitation that was imposed upon us, we felt that we could not be as effective any longer and sadly have, have resigned. Um, this is, I'm reading a portion of the letter in which we sent to the mayor and the council. We are disappointed that we've reached this juncture, but we will, uh, commit ourselves to the seniors of Montclair. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting eight, six, two, 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 four. It is your turn to comment. Eight, six, two, 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 four. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Yes, good evening, Martin Schwartz, uh, Montclair. Did you need the address? I can't remember, Tim.
Negative.
Okay. Uh, on the, um, court, the skate park and use of Rand Park as the location. This is Town Economics one oh one. You do not use and kill a capital asset already paid for that's being used now to then lose the service and benefit of the court that was already created to create another entity. You place it somewhere else. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have already been spent on those tennis courts over the years, maintaining them, building them. You do not kill that then to lose the benefit of the tennis courts. You build a skate park in another location. A primary area would be right across from Clary Anderson Arena where there is a angled, almost, uh, looks like three quarters of an acre. That would be a perfect placement right nearby, but there are other places around town too. This is no-brainer economics and the intent to use Rand Park's tennis court is just foolish. Second, it should be very apparent that this council's politics are imploding. You've been booted out from the school operations to oversee the, um, BOE budgets. And now the seniors are telling you that they want nothing to do with you because you don't consult with them, don't take their opinions into consideration, have not provided the effective services. So despite your self-belief that you are actually doing the job, you should be looking at reality that you are not doing the job, that people are telling you you are failing with preemptive thinking, with proactive thinking, and coming up with solutions that accommodate the community. In effect, this council is imploding and failing. I urge you to reconsider how you are relating to boards, how you are relating to services, and begin to adopt a different approach in the township's governance. It is no-brainer economics sometimes. We've seen too many mistakes, lack of forward-thinking, lack of decision-making that becomes crisis. And it's all imploding on you now. Everyone gets it. Unfortunately, sadly, you do not. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting nine, seven, three, four, two, four. It is your turn to comment. Nine, seven, three, four, two, four. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deirdre Malloy and I am a former Co-Chair of the Montclair Housing Commission by choice uh, because I have taken a job, uh, overseeing real estate developments on a large scale. And I willingly resigned because it could have been a conflict of interest. Uh, I'm calling to also say that I am the current Chairperson of the Landlord Tenant Advisory Committee. I am in support of rent control. I do know that the committee reconstruction is being worked on. That is not why I'm calling. I am calling to say that rent control is very important. Some type of, uh, mechanism that would deal with the unconscionable rents. I will not repeat some of the things that have been said earlier because they go without saying. But I will tell you that, uh, the committee that has been, uh, fielding phone calls, uh, and referrals directly to me has received upwards of thirty-plus complaints of new landlords coming in town, not bothering to understand whether they need to register their properties and/or whether there's any type of ordinance happening for rent control or rent freeze due to the COVID pandemic. And there have been complications with current tenants within those leases. And, uh, even one attorney has referred the landlord and tenant to the landlord-tenant advisory committee to resolve. So it is very important for, for those of you who are having issues to continue to reach out to TUNE, uh, become members. Uh, if you have issues, you may reach out to the landlord-tenant advisory committee. Uh, and if for some reason there's a referendum, you need to come out to vote. Because otherwise, uh, you know, without rent control, uh, we will have a significant problem on our hands with rent increases. Uh, and earlier it was mentioned that, uh, you know, certain landlords may be, uh, acting fraudulently. Uh, there are certain landlords within the township that are acting fraudulently, allegedly. So if there was a rent control board and rent control officer in place, when complaints come to that body, those things would be able to be enforced accordingly. And I want to thank you all very much for the hard work you're doing, uh, those who are working on the, uh, rent control negotiations. Uh, thank you and have a good night.
Next would be caller with the number starting nine, one, seven, five, two, eight. It is your turn to comment. Nine, one, seven, five, two, eight. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Uh, hi, this is, uh, James Cornejo and my address is five, twenty-one Upper Mountain Avenue, uh, in Montclair, New Jersey. Hello?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. It's your turn, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, first I want to, uh, commend, uh, the committee working on the skateboard park. I think they did a great job and, uh, as a parent myself, I, I think it's a, a great, uh, a great asset to the community. Um, on the other, on the other hand, I'm also a tennis player. So I just wanted to give a few of my opinions on this, uh, issue. So, um, in designing a skateboard park, we have the opportunity of looking for land that may not be usable for other things that are, because what I wanted to remind people is that tennis requires flat land. Uh, it's one of the, you know, one of the sports that requires this. Also, Rand is one of the only, is the only court that's free with a hitting wall that anybody who wants to, uh, who is a beginner can use to practice. Also, I've been, um, advocating to repair the lights in the tennis courts, especially in Issuane in Mountainside. It would give more opportunities for the people to, who really want to play tennis to play, uh, you know, I remind you in October, at five o'clock, the lights go down. So it gives people the opportunity to play and, uh, you know, shows some effort or some, or, uh, some kind of token of- or some kind of token of help to the people who do want to have tennis. You know, and if we do lose this park, at least we can have something that, you know, that can help the tennis player. But I do urge that we look for other unusable property that's curved, that doesn't have a flat paint thing because I think that the skateboard park is important, but I also don't want to lose something that a lot of us use. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973746. 973746. It is your turn to comment. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device and keep your comments to three minutes. 973746.
Yes, I already spoke. I had a call back in because I was cut off. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next would be caller number, with the number starting 973330. It is your turn to comment, 973330. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Yes, hi, my name is Frank Quebec. I'm a resident of the town. And, you know, it's unfortunate what's transpired with the senior citizens advisory committee. But I really think that the members that resigned are doing the right thing and a more productive thing for themselves and the community. You're going to have an opportunity to be unshackled by the government oversight. And, you know, I look forward to what you can do and provide for the seniors in the community. And you should feel good about that and no regrets. So congratulations and move on. Thank you.
Mayor, there is no one else in the queue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stafford, Mr. Fan, appreciate it and all those who called in as well. We do have a number of items to go over. We'll note this first for our new business ordinances. Ordinance O2202, we are going to pull that one from this meeting, so we're not going to address that today. Next, our resolution R22022, same thing here. We'll likely delay that for a week as well and not address that tonight. Moving forward, next, our new business resolutions that we have. We have resolution R22023, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Nella Carpentry and Masonry LLC. I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments? Seeing none, being that it's a contract, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next, resolution R22024, resolution approving to execute the grant contract to the Department of Justice, BJA-FY21, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments?
Mayor, I'll just make a comment on this. I think, you know, several of us, I'm not sure how many of you have gotten some pushback from the community on the acceptance of this grant. And I think what I appreciated with this was the attached memo from the chief of police explaining how it'll be used. It enlightened me and excited me just knowing that this is tied specifically to the federal Matthew Shepard hate crimes bill that was passed in 2009. It's something that I personally fought really hard for because it had to deal with LGBT hate crimes, obviously named after Matthew Shepard, who was murdered back in 1997 on the fence post in Wyoming for being gay. And so I'm excited about what this money can mean for the town because when I fought for this on the federal level, the idea was that we would be able to have communities around the country like Montclair develop model policies and approaches for how to deal with heinous hate crimes like the Matthew Shepard incident. So folks who are reaching out and saying, "Don't accept this money because it's an expansion of the police budget", it's not at all what it is. It's a federal grant to specifically help Montclair Township address hate crimes and to hopefully develop model policies and approaches to hate crime incidents that can be replicated across the state and across the country. And I see no downside to that. I think, you know, local governments are supposed to be the... Where you experiment with democracy and policy and this is exactly what we should be doing. And I think the fact that the federal Department of Justice wants to give Montclair the money is a testament to their faith in our ability to use it appropriately. So I feel strongly about accepting this. And Mayor, and those of you on the Public Safety Committee and those of you, I think, on the Education Committee who work with our grant writers to help get this money, I want to say thank you to you for helping unlock some real meaningful funding for real meaningful work. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And certainly I would note, you know, with great appreciation, Council colleagues Schleger and Price Abrams, who are on the Education Committee that, you know, quite frankly, went after this with the grant writers. I think it's hand in glove with the work that you noted on the federal level that you were involved in and the importance there. And to be able to bring this to the municipal level, it's of great importance. And certainly, as all the reasons you described was why we were as excited about it as you are, sir. And excited meaning that we know what effect it can have, what difference it can make and certainly what it can help create here in terms of sustainability, addressing issues moving forward. So, you know, agree with you fully. And I want to thank my colleagues who I know put considerable time into this as well and again, Councilman Schleger and Price Abrams as well. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Madam Clerk.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. Yep, just, I will...
I'm sorry, Councilman Price Abrams, all right.
All right. No, really, the second and third or something, you know, what you've both offered up is really the thrust here and with appreciation that we have an opportunity. As we've... Asian-American violence is something that's been on, it's in the news with terrible regularity in part since, you know, echoes from COVID and different things like terrible, terrible stuff that happens in people's minds. And there's many other kinds of bias that will be captured with the opportunity we have here to address it, to bring people closer, to bring greater understanding. And, you know, while we have a lot of pride in the kind of community that we all live in, there's always room for growth and understanding and breaking down barriers that maybe we don't even recognize we have at times until it's upon us. And so I just want to, you know, echo the importance of what this grant represents and glad that we can, we've been awarded it and glad that we're going to receive it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings? Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have...
Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes?
It's me. I noticed that Mr. Cummings was temporarily, seems to have lost service. So I'm not sure if his vote was heard or if he heard his name called for a vote. So he's been in and out for the last moment or so. So maybe you want to, maybe the clerk wants to ask the gentleman again for his vote.
Madam Clerk, did you have a vote recorded for Councilman Cummings? Did you hear him or was it...?
No, I can't hear him, Mayor.
Okay, then it's not just on mine. So does all, he's in on mine, too. Councilman Cummings, can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Fan?
I'm in the, I'm in the text with Councilor Cummings. He vote, his vote is, yeah, he's having some network internet, network issue from connecting to the meetings.
Okay, so we heard a vote yes there. Is that what you said, Mr. Fan?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So in that, and there he's popping in and out. So certainly as he pops back in, he can, if he chooses, modify that or clarify if that wasn't the case, but we have his yes. Okay, thank you. Next is resolution R22025, which is a resolution authorizing the 2021 appropriation reserve transfers pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-59. I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings? He's still not back. Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next, why don't we jump a little bit? We'll go to resolution R22027, which is a resolution authorizing the person-to-person place-to-place transfers, the alcohol beverage consumption license is noted and I so move.
Second.
Seconded, questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings? Now I don't see him on the screen, so I'm just going to...
I'm sure he's coming back off and on. That's the usual... Exactly, the restart or the jump on another device. I'm sure he's working on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next is resolution R22026, Councilman Schleger, would you mind?
Of course, thank you. Whereas invoices against the township of Montclair in favor of the following persons for the amounts set opposite their respective names have been received, duly audited and found correct. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the township of Montclair in the county of Essex that said invoices be and they are hereby ordered paid and that checks be drawn by the finance department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively inherent after stated on the schedule attached here to and made a part here of. This bill list is dated February 15, 2022 for $18,866,32.9 and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions, concerns or comments? Councilman Yakovales?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Stafford, on page five, Samantha Bueller, PO 2200113, it just says strengthening grant fringe and then cuts off. Just curious what that is.
That's the grant that funds that temporary part-time employee in the health department who serves as a vulnerable population outreach coordinator.
Thank you. And then starting on page six, there's a series of CDW Government, Inc. So if you could just confirm what that entity is and what they do. And then specifically, I just had a question about PO 2102127, just in terms of what that is, childhood LED grant.
Well, CDW Government is the entity that has the state contract for various technology systems like Cisco. I don't know the purchase number off the top of my head, so maybe you can tell me what the subject matter is?
PO 2102127 says childhood LED grant for 2021, 2022 MS SURF for $6,287.
Do you have a page number on that, sir?
Page six.
Oh, that was for laptops for the health department and it was funded by a LED grant.
Okay. And then lastly, page 32. I just want to confirm there was a resolution associated with a PO 1905440 for the purchase of a 2019, 2024 F-150 and what department that vehicle was for.
That is for the Department of Community Services and it was resolution R19184.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Stafford. That's all, Mayor.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Councilman Cummings, for R22025, 22027, would you like to just note your vote for the clerk? We've already voted affirmatively on those.
Yeah, it was yes, it's fair, it's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. We all know the technical difficulties that arise, so thank you. Next, Mr. Stafford, I want to read you to the next number of items that we will be discussing and moving, discussing and likely moving to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, on March 19 of 2019, by resolution R19062, the governing body consistent with the bylaws of the Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund appointed a township employee to serve as alternate fund commissioner. Given that that employee no longer works for the township, the attached resolution would appoint Operation Supervisor Carmine Davino as the alternate fund commissioner. Item number two would be a resolution that would authorize the execution of a professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed $198,000 with Matrix New World Engineering. The township's licensed site remediation professional contracted to analyze and address site remediation concerns as required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and related to the 219 North Fulton Avenue Public Works Yard underground storage tanks that were removed in the 1990s. Work to be performed under this agreement would include subsurface investigation and preparation of regulatory submittals and documents required for the remedial course of action during 2022 with remediation work anticipated for 2023. To date, Matrix New World Engineering has completed required engineering studies to determine the appropriate course of action to remediate the contaminated soils from 1990s located within the subject property. Beyond this agreement is anticipated that NJDEP reporting, remedial contract bid administration, monitoring and contractor oversight will be required to pursue final case closure and those activities will be covered under a separate proposal when appropriate.
Mr. Stafford, just a question on that one, Mayor, if that's okay?
Absolutely, yeah, Councilman.
Thank you. So I understand 2022 will essentially be the year that we come up with the site remediation plan for the contamination cleanup there. Are we planning as part of the capital budget to fund actual remediation work? Because I understand that could be a couple million dollars similar to what we're dealing with.
No, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know that that qualifies as an appropriate capital expense. So it will have to be funded, but it will be funded in a future year.
Okay, and we're thinking that work would start in 2023?
Yes.
Remediation work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number three would be a resolution that would authorize the township's application for a state of New Jersey Safe and Secure Communities grant in the amount of $32,400. This funding would be used to offset part of the salaries of a police lieutenant in the community services unit and a detective in the bureau who develop methods to combat the increase of crime by, among other methods, participating in community engagement by being visible faces in the community, using technology, meeting with citizens and business owners and training residents in domestic violence response, including educating victims about their rights, court proceedings, restraining orders and safe house locations. The required match in funding is satisfied by way of the two officers' salaries and benefits. On December 30 of 2021, three bids were received, opened and read for the township's annual elevator maintenance and repair service contract for the township's six elevators. An analysis of the bid's components, including monthly maintenance, hourly labor rates and parts cost percentage markup, proved Elevator Maintenance Corporation of Carney, New Jersey to be the lowest responsible responsive bidder. Accordingly, recommendation is made to and the resolution in item four would award a contract for elevator maintenance and repair services in an amount not to exceed $180,000 at the hourly rates included in the applicable bid for the contract period January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024, thus a two-year contract. This contract would include two one-year options at the sole discretion of the township to extend the contract for one year apiece in the amount not to exceed $90,000 per contract year, pending adoption of those calendar year budgets and certification of funds required by the chief financial officer. Item number five is a grant insertion, and its resolution would serve as the township's request to the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Director of the Division of Local Government Services, to approve the insertion of the grant in the referenced amount as an item of revenue in the township's twenty-two budget, twenty-twenty-two budget, and as an appropriation in the same amount. This grant does not have a local match requirement, and it, its particulars are, uh, a Friends of the Montclair Township Animal Service, I'm sorry, Friends of the Montclair Animal Shelter, uh, grant to the Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Stafford, um, on that one, just in terms of the memo, it says the Shelter short-staffed. Is that because of an open position or is someone on leave?
No, it's because of an open position.
Okay. Thank you.
For item number six, applicants for development projects are required to deposit funds in escrow. The projects listed on Schedule A have been determined to be substantially complete, have been denied or withdrawn, and all relevant fees have been satisfied. And accordingly, there appears to be no further basis to retain the escrow deposits listed thereon. This resolution would authorize their release and would direct our Chief Financial Officer to issue checks for same to the applicable developers. On December twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-one, two bids were received, opened, and read for the township's park maintenance service contract. This contract is required to supplement the efforts of the Department of Community Services by providing seasonal park maintenance, including spring cleanup, lawn mowing and trimming, and fall cleanup of Nishuane Park, Canterbury Park, Porter Park, Edgemont Memorial Park, and Yantica Brook Park. An analysis of the submitted bid's components proved Custom Care Services Incorporated of Wall, New Jersey to be the lower responsible responsive bidder. Accordingly, recommendation, recommendation is made to, and the resolution in item seven would award a contract for parks maintenance services in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars at the rates included in the applicable bid for the contract period of calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. The township's Office of Emergency Management submitted an application to the State of New Jersey's Department of Law and Public Safety to receive federal funding in the form of a fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one Emergency Management Performance Grant. The purpose of this grant program is to enhance the township's ability to prevent, protect against, respond to, and recover from acts of terrorism, natural disasters, and other catastrophic events and emergencies. The township was awarded an Emergency Management Agency Assistance Subgrant in the amount of ten thousand dollars with no local matching fund requirement. Item number eight is a resolution that would accept that grant award. On June twenty-three of two thousand and twenty, by Resolution twenty-dash-one-zero-five, this governing body awarded a contract for fire department apparatus maintenance and repair services with a not-to-exceed amount of sixty thousand dollars per year for a total not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the two-year contract period of May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty, through May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. Given additional service work required on the fire apparatus fleet that will require funding beyond that not-to-exceed amount, including repairs to engine number one, engine number four, and truck number two, and remaining preventative maintenance scheduled through the end of the contract term, recommendation is made to, and the resolution in item number nine would authorize the amending of the not-to-exceed amount of the contract by eighty-five thousand dollars for a new total contract amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars. Item number ten is a resolution in connection with the remediation of three ninety-nine Orange Road. It would authorize the execution of a professional services agreement extension with H-two-M Associates LLC at a cost not to exceed forty-two thousand, one-hundred dollars. To partially fund this remediation fund grant, I'm sorry, to partially fund this contract, the township received a supplemental hazardous discharge site remediation fund grant from the N J D E P, uh, Economic Development Authority in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Per this agreement, H-two-M Associates will perform the additional remediation investigation activities and preparation of an amended remedial action work plan for the site as required by the N J D E P.
Mr. Stafford, um, Mayor, with your permission, just similar questions to the one about two-nineteen North Fulton. Is the idea that we would start remediation work for the site in twenty-twenty-three, or the hope?
I can't say that at this point. I, I cannot say that. Uh, unlike the previous, um, item where work is anticipated to commence in two thousand and twenty-three, uh, at this point, I can't say that remediation work will start in two thousand and twenty-three. We have to rely on H-two-M Associates to prepare, uh, to do the subsurface, um, investigation and, uh, prepare the remedial action plan, and once that happens, N J D E P has to approve it. I can't guarantee that will happen in the next ten months.
Got it. Okay, so at least we'll actually have to analyze what the contaminants are.
Uh, I think that's been going on for quite some time. Uh, I believe that this, this, um, uh, remedial investigation started in two thousand and eight.
Wow. Okay.
Yep. At, at the very least, the township received its first hazardous discharge site remediation fund grant for that subject property in two thousand and eight. Item number eleven would be a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to J D Information Systems Consulting for information technology-related services in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand dollars for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. It is reasonably expected that this contract will exceed the state's seventeen thousand, five-hundred-dollar pay-to-play threshold, and so this resolution with certification by a township official that the estimated amount of the contract will exceed that factor figure, in this case, the qualified purchasing agent, is required by state statute.
Sorry, I have a question on this, too. What, what's the work that this entity would be doing for the township?
Uh, the vendor provides level-three subject matter help desk support, providing solutions for a wide variety of technical problems, um, that we experience on the highest level uh, of our I T network, including servers, engineering, hardware, software.
Thank you.
Item twelve is another grant insertion, and the accompanying resolution would serve as the township's request to the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Director of the D L G S, uh, requesting to approve the insertion of the grant in the referenced amount as an item of revenue in our twenty-twenty-two budget, uh, and as an appropriation in the same amount. The grant does not have a local match, and the grant specifically is a thirty thousand dollar grant from Partners for Health to support the, uh, Montclair Institute of Lifelong Learning Programming for seniors at the Edgemont Park Shelter House. State law requires municipal governing bodies to certify annually that their municipalities' hiring practices comply with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's Enforcement Guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen-sixty-four. You were sent in my January eleven, two thousand and twenty-two memo, a summary of procedures followed when recruiting and hiring, confirming that the township adheres to federal requirements regarding criminal background checks and related employment-related decisions. Based upon same, the resolution in item thirteen would ensure compliance with state law, as would the group affidavit to be distributed by the township clerk for your signatures.
Excuse me, Mr. Stafford. Mr. Stafford?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Okay. On the one before that, I actually wanted to ask, I realize it's the, um, the Partners for Health, uh, grant to support the mill, and to the extent that it was, um, for, you know, the calendar year that we've already started, is it helpful if we take this item out and move it tonight? Is this one of those?
Uh, we have a meeting next Wednesday. I don't think that's dramatically necessary, but it's, it's completely up to you.
All right, as long as it's not in any way, you know, having any.
I don't believe it to be time-sensitive, warranting immediate action, given especially that we have a meeting in, in seven days.
Okay, very good.
Items seventeen and eighteen would be resolutions. I'm sorry for my phone ringing next to us here. Um, I think I was able to make it stop. Items seventeen and eighteen would be resolutions that would authorize the placement of municipal liens on certain and specific properties in town. More particularly, these liens are the result of the township's efforts to manage vacant properties. Each lien consists of the actual cost for a contractor to perform specific work at properties, a charge for the township's special counsel to prepare the liens, and an administrative service fee for the township's work in handling the matter. Each resolution has attached to it a certification regarding the work performed and the lien specific. The work relevant to these two liens were, was performed by the same contractor, that being Angels Landscape Contractors, and each lien's work was for snow, slush, and/or ice removal on or about February one of two thousand and twenty-two. The two liens total four hundred and ninety dollars. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Review of those as well. All right, thank you. Um, with that and review of those, I, I think this was noted by Councilman Price Abrams. Let's review those pieces, see if, uh, you know, any of those that, uh, um, we need to review to make sure we're ready to move on them for, for the next meeting, which we know is a little bit different than many because of the, the shift here. We've got one in a week as opposed to the usual two weeks. I know my colleagues will just review all the items as needed, so appreciate that. Okay. Next, um, would like to, as, as, uh, I think we've been able to figure out the technology here. Mr. Fan will yell to me otherwise. If that isn't the case, we're not working. Uh, but we did want to invite, uh, in for, for a discussion and, uh, really just have them share comments. Um, and, uh, the African American Clergy Association, and certainly, um, as we bring, uh, them, them in. I know, uh, our township attorney has some pieces he'd like to note, and, and before we begin that process, just so we make sure we're covered, uh, but certainly we wanted to afford them the opportunity to come in and to specifically, uh, speak to us and, uh, share their comments. So, Mr. Fan, if, if, if the technology's working, let's see if we can get that figured out.
That's, uh, that's me, Mayor. I'm going to make the.
Okay.
Folks panelists, as we speak, you will see, start to see them, I believe, populate.
And then, Mr. Burr, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and thank you, council members, for having me here tonight. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, welcome our guests to tonight's meeting, if they're in. Hopefully, they're in. And I'd like to take this opportunity to inform our guests and the public that the municipal employees have.
Hello, Mr. Burr. I'm just gonna make sure. Mr. Stafford, you all set? Everybody good?
I've been able to do five of the seven, Mayor. I'm having a technical glitch, so I'm consulting with Mr. Fan on the remaining two. The system is not letting me make these folks panelists at the moment.
Give, give it just a second, Mr. Burr.
Okay, no problem. We'll, we'll wait. Mr. Stafford, let me know when everyone's on.
I will, sir.
Again, Mrs. Scott and Reverend Campbell, you may want to consider we join the meeting in order for you to be appear as a panelist. Mr. Scott, you there?
Mr. Fan, we're hearing you, so I'm not sure what, what, if that's the intent, but that's who you're trying to speak to.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Mrs. Scott and Reverend Campbell is, um, I think they have to rejoin the meeting, but unfortunately, they are not responding, so. Not sure, uh, we want to give them a couple of minutes, or you might want to move out. Mrs. Scott, just restarted, joining the meeting now.
Okay, I was gonna say, let's give it just, uh, like thirty more seconds and see if they're hearing or if it's tech thing. If not, we can begin, and, uh, hopefully, they can join. All right, Mr. Burr, why don't you go ahead and, uh, kick us off, and, uh, we can begin.
To, uh, begin again. Good evening. I'd like to welcome our guests to tonight's meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to inform our guests and the public that the municipal employees have a right to pot, to privacy and confidentiality relating to their employment with the Montclair Township. The law precludes the governing body from discussing any aspect of a municipal employee's employment with the township. Please refrain from asking the government governing body questions or for comment pertaining to any specific municipal employee or former employee. I thank you for your appreciation. I appreciate your cooperation and understanding with these restraints. Thank you very much. And there, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and we will open it up. I'm not sure who would like to speak.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Reverend Anita Wright, and I am the pastor of Trinity Presbyterian Church in Montclair, and as a part of the Montclair African American Association, we, clergy association, excuse me, we wanted to come and, and really just to kind of address some of the things that were covered or that were made public in our press release. And so, while we are not present to address any specifics of comments made during the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, we would like to address some policy issues and procedures that we feel would be beneficial to moving forward um, when dealing with discriminatory actions from members, representatives, employees, or appointees of the town council, should they occur. Some of our inquiries are simply that. They're simply queries, um, for more information to help us understand process and to help us understand procedures. Yet, some of them, others of them, address policies and procedure changes that we believe, if implemented, would feel, um, we feel would allow our public representatives to act in the best interest of, or back, act in fairness and equitable ways to foster trust in all of its constituents. So, this is kind of where we're coming from. These are kind of some of the things that we kind of wanted to address, um, the things that are still lingering for us as a clergy association and as members of the community. The first thing that we want to do, um, we would like to acknowledge the public statement of apology, um, that no more information could be shared by Mr. Yakovales on the January, the, excuse me, eighteenth meeting, and we, um, and followed up by, reiterated by Mayor Spiller. We appreciate your willingness to address this, and, um, we certainly understand, you know, that, you know, that which constrains you and, and allows you, you know, to not be able to answer that. That places us sometimes in a precarious situation when there is a call for more information, so we appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying that and, and making that statement. And so, our next statements are really some clarifying questions for some things that we would like to know. The first is, what is the township's policy on inappropriate conduct engaged by township member, um, township member, council members, excuse me, representatives, employees, or appointees? Do you have a policy, and if so, what is that policy?
Mr. Stafford?
The township has a zero-tolerance policy with respect to harassment, discrimination, or bias in any form for all employees. The township has a zero tolerance policy with respect to harassment, discrimination, or bias in any form for all employees.
Okay, if that is the case, can you help us to clarify? By zero tolerance, what do you mean? And what exactly is that policy? How is it implemented? Or what is it? The what is the process of implementation? What do you expect when that happens?
Forgive me, but what do I expect when what happens?
So if you have to, if someone, if there's this case of harassment or whatever, and you said you have a zero tolerance policy, what is your zero tolerance policy? What is it stated? How does it state? And then, when it's implemented, so we have the zero tolerance policy, if you have to implement, if you have to address it, if there's been a case of if there's been a case of harassment, how do you implement the zero tolerance policy is my question?
Well, if there's an allegation of harassment in any form, a confidential inter, a confidential EEOC type investigation is probably convened. And if the results of that investigation is a or are a are findings of a sustaining of the allegations of harassment, then the employee would be disciplined appropriately.
Okay, does your policy determine or does it state what that discipline is, just the policy itself?
It says that the pop that the discipline will be up to and including termination.
Okay. Okay. What I think, yes, what I think we want to understand is, is is there a process? There, this is a different question, different query, but is there a process that allows the public to access findings, recommendations, or subsequent actions taken by the council when there has been an investigation undertaken?
Mr. Burr, I'll turn that to you. Mr. Stafford, I know you've dealt with some as well. And specifically, I can tell you that from the council perspective, often we're not allowed to have information shared with us, so.
So there's before Mr. Burr speaks, there's really, there's really two types of of scenarios that could occur if it's a governing body appointee.
Sorry, excuse me. I'm having some trouble hearing because of some background noise. I apologize.
If if everyone can mute, just make sure they're muted on, I know, you know, it's it's the Zoom world, or WebEx in this case, if we're gonna make sure they're muted, that's greatly appreciated. Mr. Stafford, and then Mr. Burr is needed.
Certainly. What I was about to say was, if if the if a charge of harassment is made against a an employee who is a an appointee of the governing body, then the results of the investigation would go to the governing body for determination on how to handle. If though the if a charge of harassment is made against an employee who's not a governing body employee, and the overwhelming majority of employees are not, then the charge of investigation results would would not go to the governing body. And in fact, the governing body would be precluded and prohibited by law from knowing anything about it. So in that instance, it would come to the check, the township manager for disposition with respect to penalty, if that's applicable. In other words, if the if the charges were sustained. I defer to you, Mr. Burr, with respect to the fruits of the investigation.
And can you repeat that question again about the fruits of the investigation?
The last part, Mr. Burr, would be, can it specifically be shared with the public? So I was noting, you know, Mr. Stafford notified when it can be shared with even the council, but personnel investigations, can they be shared with the public?
I, you know, to give a short answer, no, they they can't.
Okay, so I guess my question, because you've already kind of addressed what constitutes, I guess, a personnel issue or a personnel concern. My question then would be if there is a an investigation requested at the behest of the public, is there then no way for the public to follow up with the findings or any outcomes of said investigations then? I'm just, I want to know for clarification.
By law, the public would only be able to know what resulted if the employee was terminated. And the reason I say that is because executive order of the governor, I think it might have been Governor McGreevy, allows for dissemination of personnel information in very, very limited circumstances, one of which is date of hire and date of separation from employment and reason therefore. So if if someone retired and went on a pension, the public is allowed to know that. If the if the person was terminated, the public is allowed to know that, too.
Okay. Okay. So is there, if is there, and if there is, I'm going to ask, what is it? Is there a written protocol for how racist statements, and I guess I would maybe come under harassment, just clarify me if I'm wrong, racist statements by township members, employees, representatives, or appointees will be addressed by the council? And if that's a redundant question, just let me know that because it does sound similar to a previous one.
Do you want me to answer that?
That's to Mr. I, Mr. Stafford again, but it does sound redundant.
I'm sorry, you're you're asking me, ma'am, if if the council has a policy with respect to how it will handle racist statements made by employees that it points, I I'm not aware of of such a policy, but I defer to the governing body members.
Yeah, we're governed by the same policies that the town has, so we, it's the same policy.
And then my final query, my final question and query is really about policy statements moving forward? Or maybe not, maybe there's something already in place, but if there is, I don't know. And so maybe you can help us. My question is, does the township have any plans to implement a cultural competency competency training that is required for all employees or future employees? And if so, when? And if not, can that be? I just believe that I, well, we as a collective believe that going forward, that's probably something that is well worth investing in when we talk about a fair and equitable and a just Montclair, particularly Mayor Spiller, as you mentioned in your state of the township address, how there seems to be a continual rise, or at least recent rise in incidence of injustice. And so I'm wondering, and these are certainly criminal things, but it just in general, I'm wondering if there is a requirement for such a training, a cultural competency training and sensitivity training? Or is that something that can be addressed?
There is, and I agree with you that it's extremely important, important. I came to work for the township in October of two thousand fourteen. And since then, and possibly before, I'm not aware of what happened before, but at least since then, township employees have received mandatory anti-harassment training by and through our Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund on at least a biennial basis. For most, for most township employees, this training is done in person. And I have to say that conditions caused by the pandemic since March of two thousand twenty has severely limited that training because our JIF representatives were not coming out in person, and we were shut down, as you can appreciate, for a a good portion of the year of two thousand twenty. However, I I have personally spoken with our JIF representatives as recently as the December quarterly safety, December of two thousand twenty-one Quarterly Safety Commission meeting, and tasked them with planning to train all township employees again in person during calendar year two thousand twenty-two. And the planned training topics will again include an address anti-harassment, bias and implicit bias, diversity in the workplace, sensitivity basics, gender identity, and LGBTQ sensitivity.
Okay, thank you. Those are all of the questions that I have. I just want to defer to any of my other colleagues to see if there's anything else that I may have overlooked. I think I covered everything that I had.
This is Pastor Coles. I want to thank you for allowing us this time, Mr. Mayor. And council members, thank you so much. Dr. Wright, for your representation of us, I have to apologize that during the time of your first meeting, I was out of the country. I couldn't attend. But I've been following this issue that has arisen over the past few months. From to understand currently with respect to an issue that occurred with a employee of the township, it's a personal matter and no no sharing can be done with the public as to how the township council came to their decision on how to handle it. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so in other words, would would legal action release those documents to the public?
I can't answer that question. You'd have to consult with an attorney on that.
Okay, very good. All right, because it it does concern me that the council can take an action and is not subject to the township which they represent as to how they came about in their decision to take the action that they took. And basically, you're saying the township, because of the, I'll use the, I'm an educator, so I know something about rice. Because of that particular legal remedy, there's no way for any action taken by the counts, the council or the town with respect to a public employee to be made available to the public as to how the decision that was that was come come to, how the decision came about.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Employee has confidentiality and privacy rights that are protected by law.
I understand that. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I apologize. I do have an additional question. Can you clarify the difference for me legally or even by its by its implication or implementation between retirement and resignation and its appropriation, how it how that pans out? And does the distinction carry with it any timeline when dealing with a disciplinary action of a member representative employee appointee of the township?
You want to know what the the distinction between retirement and resignation is?
Yes, I would. I would like to know according to its implementation by the township, what is the distinction between retirement and resignation?
Well, generally, retirement is by an individual who is of a certain age or has worked a certain amount of time. They have the opportunity to retire from the from their position. Resignation is when they, when they decide they want to terminate their position on their own accord with the township.
Right. And would that carry with it any difference in benefits, whether you choose one or another? Just generally speaking?
Possibly, yes. If you resign, you you tend not to be eligible for retirement benefits.
Okay.
Does the township have the right to reject acceptance of a retirement or?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Is there an official platform that the township uses when making a statement about an incident? Or is it used as a personal platform acceptable for making statements? Is there an official platform that the township uses for making statements such as apologies or recognition of events? Or is someone's personal platform acceptable?
Mr. Stafford, I defer that to you. I don't know the answer to that question.
If if you're asking, sir, about employees, generally speaking, barring emergencies, employees are directed to speak through the township's communication director. I defer, though, and that that includes me. I ninety-nine times out of a hundred will speak barring emergency through the township's communications director. I defer, though, to the governing body members who speak for themselves, although they could also speak through the communications director when they so desire.
What's the platform that the communication director uses so we we know how the township speaks?
By, how do you, what do you mean by platform, sir? For forgive me?
Well, how is, how is communicate, how are communicates communicated? Is it the newspaper? Is it through the visual media? Is there a combination of things?
Well, that would depend on the subject matter, right? So if it's if it's to communicate to the residents of Montclair that PSENG has a program for assisting with respect to rate paying, the communications director would disseminate by way of blast email and possibly by text message alert. And she might put, she might have put on the TV thirty-four rotation a slide indicating information. On the other, on the other hand, some some instances of communication would be by posting on the website. Some might just be by release to newspapers or or online periodicals. It really depends on the situation.
So in the case of a behavior of an employee of the township who is engaged in discriminatory action, are all of these ways appropriate? You you mentioned media. Is there a particular platform or vehicle that's more appropriate than others?
I can't imagine that the communications director would send out any information for a township employee being disciplined and or terminated regardless of the reason.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, could I just address councilman, I mean Reverend Singleton? You know, we can all speak for ourselves, and then we can all speak as a group. But I know I apologized for the town. I said on behalf of my colleagues or on behalf of the town, and I personally apologize profusely at a meeting. So I'm not sure whether that's ever been recorded or heard by people. I said it, and I just apologized personally, but I also said, you know, I'm expressing on behalf of the town. I don't know whether that was appropriate or whether that was even heard. But I did it a month ago or so, and I just want to restate it again, you know, for anybody to be offended anything they think I had some control over or I had responsibility for because with the governing body, the council, I did that. I did my own apology. But, you know, we can communicate in so many different ways, Reverend, and I I just wanted to state that again myself because I don't think that was heard by people.
I think that I appreciate that. I really do. And I think that's probably the basis for the question that if there is an official way of hearing it, or where should we have heard such information being disseminated? And I think that's that's the bigger issue or the bigger question. You know, in in what place would one find this information or hear this information? And so I I think that's the question.
And what I did was at a council meeting, you know, at the end of a council meeting, a few weeks or a month ago, I did that, just when we go around and we say our piece. So you know how that's officially recorded? I don't know. Maybe it's in the minutes of our town meeting. See, that's that's where these things are usually recorded in the minutes. So the minutes would hold it. But how does it get to the people, the public, and those who are concerned? I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Well, you know, listening to to your questions, I'm glad our attorney has been able to answer many and manager, and thank you, Mr. Stafford, for for having that, your tips for some of the pieces. I think the key pieces, you know, in any ways that we can discuss pieces, especially like, I think you were, you know, spot on with some of the questions around trainings and and some of the onboarding that occurs with employees and ongoing trainings, I think important conversations to continue to have always. While we can't talk specifically about any, you know, personnel matter, we can talk in broad sense exactly along the lines that you asked about. And I think that was, you know, very important and appreciate you asking it and ability to address it here tonight. Also, certainly note, you know, at any time, yes, you can reach out with any questions. And again, we may offer that we can't answer some because of personnel matters, but the ones that we can, we certainly will also as well. And we appreciate all of you taking the time to to come on here to share your questions directly and hopefully hear some very direct answers as well. So appreciate staff for being able to do that as well. But thank you for your time. And thanks for coming on and addressing them head on. We appreciate it.
Yes, and I I think, you know, I just wanted to certainly reiterate, and and I don't need to really come back behind you, but really reiterating the the point of our questions was to ask about processes. Because in a moment, it seemed like no one or either the public did not understand what the process was or that could not be communicated. And if any processes or policies can be written policies, that would be helpful. Written policies that are accessible by the public and the public knows where to accept, access them would be helpful as well to know what is reasonable to expect or not to expect in a timely manner, and then defining what is timely. So, you know, the fact that you have a zero tolerance policy is wonderful, but having it written and stated stated and showing us what that policy is, I think is important to us. It is important for us to know that and to know what is expected of that. But knowing that and just hearing it and seeming to go around and around in circles for months now just seemed very untenable to me.
Where can we access that zero tolerance statement?
I can access it through Human Resources and send it to Pastor Wright, if you'd like, who can certainly forward it to you folks.
Thank you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
By all means.
Certainly will note that I I can only share and and. Certainly will note that uh I I can only share and and take it for for what you will. But it it oftentimes can be as frustrating for us as it is for you. This these are, you know, laws that uh are are often cases, federal state laws that we, you know, have to abide by. So we have our processes in place. We have, uh, as Mr. Stafford just noted, policies in place to not tolerate um any of the things that uh have been noted and asked about. Um, but we are restricted in terms of it as a personnel matter. And then, you know, the 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 real, I would argue, the frustration is the rub of where that meets the policy meets the action. And that is where we we legally cannot share. And I understand how frustrating that can be. And and I will only offer that as frustrating as you think it may be, trust us sitting here in these positions when we were being, you know, asked questions we cannot answer legally. It is oftentimes as frustrating, I can tell you. But but we do have to abide by the law on that. But but understand and appreciate your question.
Mayor, can I? May I just add one other thing? If if you folks go on the township website, at the top, there's a ribbon that has dropdown menus and one of the dropdown menus is government and one of the selections is departments. And one of the departments, obviously, is Human Resources. If you click on Human Resources, you'll see four um items at the left. Uh, the bottom item is the Equal Employment Opportunity slash Affirmative Action Statement. Uh, I update this every year. Township manager updates it every year. We did it January third of two thousand twenty two. And uh written, I just pulled it up as as the mayor was speaking, written right there uh is that uh among other things, discrimination is prohibited with regard to terms and conditions of employment, including policies and practicing affecting recruitment, hiring, placement, work assignments, working environments, promotions, demotions, transfers, disciplinary actions, layoffs, recalls, uh terminations, evaluations, and the list goes on. And and um it talks how about how acts of discrimination among employees are inappropriate and will not be tolerated. I won't go through it right now, but you can access this as soon as you exit the the virtual meeting on our website. You'll see exactly what I'm what what I'm referring to by this memo. It's it's right there for you to see, right for the there for the world to see.
Mr. Stafford, I appreciate that. I I think that our concern is, let's say, me as a person joining the staff. If I were to commit an act which was deemed to be um um egregious or or racially insensitive, what would I expect could happen to me? That's what we want to see listed. And it sounds like it's at the discretion of the township council to decide.
No, that's not correct unless it's a governing body appointee. If it's not a governing body appointee and the uh charge of harassment uh once analyzed results in the sustaining of the charges, then a penalty would be up to the township manager. That's the law in the state of New Jersey in this form of government.
So if if the individual like myself were found to be guilty of such an offense, there is a penalty?
If if the charges were sustained, yes, there would absolutely be a penalty. You are correct.
Sustained. Okay.
There's there's no question whatsoever.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're correct.
I'm clear on that now.
And so I I just wanted to speak for a minute about um just what I think is an opportunity in the public sector overall. I think since the last few years, we've seen a ton of incidents, obviously, in terms of women stepping forward with regards to harassment, um race-based incidents, sexual orientation, gender identity-based, religious-based incidents. And you know, the the public sector in general has a lot of catching up to do with the private sector. Those of us who have worked in the private sector know when you get a job at the Fortune five hundred company, you go through rigorous H R training. And then you have rigorous requirements for annual training to the point where people, you know, employees roll their eyes at having to go through everything that they have to go through. My team at Amex, we specifically designed the training content that the global employee workforce for American Express had to go through. We designed the the videos. We designed the information packets. And so I was really in the weeds on that stuff in the in the private sector. But both before American Express and since, my experience in the public sector has been, you know, just recognizing that we don't, we don't do that well. When I worked for New York State, um and I worked for Governor Cuomo, which is now a famed situation. And I participated in the investigation of him with the Attorney General. One of the things that came up repeatedly was that appointees of the governor, anybody appointed by the governor in New York State, twenty five hundred people, did not go through the same sexual harassment training that all other employees in New York State went through. The same is true for uh or was true for New Jersey government entities in terms of political appointees. The same is true for anybody, I shouldn't say anybody, but many people who work on many campaigns. If you work for a campaign for a candidate for elected office, most of the time you're not put through or subjected to ha- having to go through any kind of training when it comes to harassment, discrimination. Um, and so I think it's been an eye-opening couple of years, and I see the public sector trying harder. And you heard Mrs. Stafford talk through some of the additional areas of focus that our employees are going to be going through as well in the years ahead. And this, I think, is just an overall necessary correction and catching up that the public sector has to do to meet what the private sector standards are. And I think it's a healthy process. I just don't think we're there yet, and we're trying to get there and trying to figure out uh how to get there. But I think the intent is there.
Right. I I think the issue, though, is one of transparency. Look, you you brought it up, so let's use it. In the in that situation, there was an investigation. There was a five hundred or so page report put out which was sent to individuals who should have it, and then it became or would become public knowledge as to what was in the report. So would that be and would that be in in uh compliance with with the rules and regulations of the investigation? Or would that be in a situation where his rights were were offended?
Well, in terms of Governor Cuomo, I think the difference is he was an elected official.
Electric public official.
Yeah.
Okay. So if so, in other words, if it was, it would be handled differently if it was an appointed position?
In New York State, I don't know. Um, I know Mr. Burr was speaking. I'm sorry.
What about in New Jersey? Since you worked in New Jersey?
I I haven't worked for New Jersey.
And Mr. Alkabellis isn't an attorney, so I don't know if he could give a legal opinion.
I was gonna just defer to you, sir.
You know, again, I would defer, I would defer those types of questions that you 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 the um clergymen have to their own private counsel and and maybe those answers would you, you know, you'd be able to receive those answers uh from.
Well, no, but I would like to know how you would advise the township as their attorney, as the township attorney.
Well, tho- those uh my advice to the council was is uh an attorney-client privileged information, and that would be kept between me and the council.
Oh, no. Okay. So in general, you would make that simple, you would make that between you and the township?
I would make that between myself and the council, yes. And and the and what the municipal employees that were involved in that situation. So it's a, it's a, again, we we come, we you you're we're crossing boundaries of personnel matters. And I know it sounds like uh this is not transparent, but unfortunately, this is the law. If the law permitted uh personnel matters and and disciplinary action to be public uh carte blanche, uh, I'm sure the governing bodies would and and the municipal township managers and and mayors would do that. But it unfortunately, their hands are tied. So once something like this happens, unfortunately, it's it's the the employee is entitled to his privacy rights.
Rightly so. Thank you.
If I may, um, clergy members and my council colleagues, I just want to really appreciate that you came on tonight. As um some of you know, I had uh through another uh leader in town had been introduced uh to Pastor Wright some several weeks ago at this point, months, a couple, maybe, I don't know. With the idea that we would um, you know, have a cup of coffee, sit down and and just open up some dialogue. Mayor Spiller and I were also um together welcoming the opportunity. And then really the feedback that came back was that really this body, meaning of clergy, wished to speak with our whole body. And so with a few, you know, growing pains of figuring it out, I'm I'm pleased that we were able to bring the bodies together tonight. Um, this is an open conversation and one that I'm happy that we have the opportunity to both, you know, get to know each other a little bit. Um, maybe this is just the very beginning. Um, you know, I I I was, we aren't in person. And as a member of the council who served only since the time it's been COVID, we would have otherwise had you upstairs. I think the second floor conference room with an opportunity to really be, you know, shaking hands and meeting one another more personally. And I I look forward to those opportunities as well. You know, so we we do our best in these circumstances, but I think we know that we also need to get outside of these settings and into the personal space. I mean, I I did participate. Um, Pastor Singleton at your uh church, so to speak, for the M L K service, which was very moving. And um I really loved the pulling together of community. These are things important to me. And so in in my own way, I'm I'm looking to build upon any measures I've taken to date and really extend my hand of um, you know, just friendship collegiality and and how we can be partners and and in many ways, you know, showing the leadership this town needs, knowing that we all have what to learn and what to grow from. So um do look forward to further conversations with you all. And, you know, sorry if any um in in abundance of caution of not speaking when I felt it wasn't something we could say, you know, if 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 a void of of uh, you know, was heard in in so many ways, I I'm sorry for pain that's been caused. I really am. And I I do look forward to a a healthy point of moving forward, and we take the opportunity from here.
Thank you. Appreciate those words. Appreciate those words.
Well, again, I will I will thank uh everybody for the conversation. Uh, it's appreciated and thank all of you for coming on. Uh, that's certainly appreciated. And and again, sharing um your direct questions and 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 hopefully getting some answers there. And and I I think uh probably helping us in a in a great way, just explain the process more fully too in a setting that allows us to do that. So we thank you for that, as the councilwoman noted, and I think we've all offered. And 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 certainly I also, you know, always happy to continue the conversation and uh look forward to doing so in in the future, always around any issue. So appreciate appreciate all your time. Uh, appreciate you coming on.
Mayor, I just want to ask, I I did see Reverend Glover on at the beginning, at least a picture. And I know we have Reverend Wright, Pastor Coles, and Reverend Singleton all heard from them. But I'd like to know who else is on? Was I saw Pastor, I saw Reverend Glover.
Yes, I'm still on.
Okay, thank you. Good. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear Pat- Pastor Campbell?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you.
I'm I'm not, uh, I guess I'm not on the panel itself, but I've been on the phone, I mean, not the phone, but on a microphone.
Thank you all. For me personally, you've been an inspiration for twenty two years. I've been on the council. Many of you have helped me, so I still keep learning. Thank you.
And I don't know if you can hear me, but this is William Scott. Uh, I've listened to the entire conversation and I really appreciate the uh the opportunity to have this conversation. And the absolute support that came from the African American clergy association to really take leadership on this situation. And uh really grateful for some excellent recommendations, and I hope this is a an opportunity to move forward with the township.
And also Pastor Shelton was locked out. He's been trying to get on, but he's been locked out, so he may be watching it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. I look forward to um a future conversation with all of you. Um, for we have been conversing after the fact. It's always better to be proactive. And so when it comes to employees, et cetera, it's better to have a conversation about what the front end looks like than to be talking about the back end. So when it comes to front end, the hiring practices, what informs the protocol, not just the whole selection process, et cetera, et cetera. Um, these are things of interest. For me, overall, I find uh some of the things that have happened in our town in recent times to be most distressing and not really incidents, uh not isolated incidents, but unfortunately more indicative of what I believe are some systemic matters that um exist in the town. And those things um are of greater concern. Uh, and of even greater than that is the reality of our world. And the reality of our world is that fear of liability, fear of being liable often uh has an adverse impact on our ability to express our humanity to one another. And that is always regrettable, always regrettable. I would to God that the higher law, the higher law uh would always trump, would always uh outweigh the law of the land when it comes to certain things. So um those are my comments, and I look forward to other moments of extended conversation that M A C A will enjoy with the council. But for now, thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you all. All right, with that, I'm gonna uh move to um council comments and of course uh manager comments, et cetera, um as as moving through our agenda. So, Mr. Stafford, I will turn it over to you for any additional comments that you have.
I don't have anything else at this time, Mayor, but thank you.
Sure. Uh, uh, Mr. Deputy Manager?
I I just have one thing, and I want to congratulate the Montclair Junior Baseball Program because starting this year, they'll be playing under the banner of Little League Baseball, which is the world's largest youth organization. Uh, they're going to be participating in District Eight, I believe. Um, and if they win that, they'll go to the regionals and hopefully they'll move on and represent Montclair and Williamsport. So uh I'm very glad about that, and it's um it's quite an honor. And hopefully, uh, young ladies and young men will do well under uh Little League Baseball. That's it, Mayor.
That's excellent. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Township Attorney?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, quickly, normally I wouldn't comment, but uh we had a big legal win uh last week with regard to the ward district maps. Um, and preventing them from being rewritten by the Essex County um Board of Elections and and Ward Commissioners. And I just want to point out and thank um in particular the township clerk, the deputy township manager, the township manager, my staff, Mrs. DeVito, uh, Ms. Wasaki, and all of the support we got from the council members uh and Mr. Mayor on supporting us through that process. Um, and and the last thank thank you would be to our outside council um from Riker Danzig, Derek Frazier Mill, and James Lot. Um, I it was just a big win for the town and um saved saved the town from spending a lot of money and redrawing uh questionable uh ward lines based on the congressional district lines that are not appear to be uh funny-looking, for the lack of a better way to describe it. I also want to thank really quickly, in case they're listening, uh, the the ward commissioners who realized that they didn't need to take action and supported the township of Montclair in withdrawing or holding off on taking any action to redraw our lines. So with that, that was it. Mister Mayor, I just wanted to point that out to everybody. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Burr, and certainly um as as we go to our Assistant Town Attorney before for her comments, we'll also again, give you, you know, you both, uh, and certainly the whole department accolades for the work on that one. Uh, certainly to our clerk, it's it's it's, uh, I guess it should be surprising, right? We we take a a word map that that she presented that just looked very logical and made a ton of sense, and we got back something that looked so different, right? But uh then it often takes a little bit of battling to get it back to where we started. So I also want to commend, you know, everybody for the work in that. I know it took everybody's voices and certainly you guys doing the legwork, certainly us doing the yelling. And uh that combination, you know, uh allowed us to get the uh, you know, maps that that again, and then, of course, we all know with the with the census has to be, you know, examined and look at our population uh and reconfigured in some ways for sure. Uh, but reconfigured in ways that make sense. And I think as a as a team effort, we got to where we needed it to be and and pardon the pun, but held the line and uh and and had a good outcome. So appreciate that. Um, uh, Madam Assistant Attorney, anything?
I have nothing. Thank you, though, Mayor.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And furtherance to all the comments about the map, I just want to say that it is available on the township website. Our three interactive maps have all been updated on the website. There's also a larger version of the map, together with the detailed changes in this office, available for public inspection. The changes were very minor. There's less than 20 properties that were affected moved. They formerly were in the second ward and they were moved to the third ward. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Schleger?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight as well. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments in closing out tonight. Again, with appreciation to our guests for being here, but in addition on other topics, I join a few others who appreciate that we moved the introduction of the budget to next week. Since we have such a close turnaround time, it does give a few of us greater opportunity to better understand some of the capital budget issues. And we did get some briefing that was more focused on operating, but we will appreciate the fuller opportunity for some questions before we introduce that budget. And leaving open a possibility of whether there is additional budget for the library, recognizing, you know, those who helped put the budget together themselves had done a, you know, returned them to the, I think, status quo ante, you know, we were back where we had been on the amount that they had asked for. Just recognizing some of the hours that we want them open and different things, we're trying to give that another look with some information there. We heard from so many people on the rent control. I do hope that there is one last attempt by the parties to find a resolution between and among themselves. But I do hope that, and I understand it's in process, that our clerk, our clerk here is certifying the petition so that we can bring this matter, if it can't get resolved between the parties who've been negotiating, that it then brought to the voters on the ballot as was expected would happen. You know, I think we will have to allow for the community in that way to decide. And it's, you know, it's a significant, significant matter. And if we can, if we can get the parties to finalize in the, in the time that will be remaining to them, I would be happy for that as well. So encourage that continued conversation. You know, just in terms of other events and things we've all attended and so many of us were able to attend in celebration of the Lunar New Year, the AAPI group, that's a relatively new body in town, brought together just an extraordinary amount of cultural, there were performances and young people. And Representative Andy Kim participated and several of you, my colleagues, were there. And just one of the events that I was able to attend recently, that it was just a very enlightening thing to learn more about that culture. And again, in ways that we're all in a continuous way of trying to learn from and about others. So I will end it with that for now. Thank you.
Councilman Cummings?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm shocked at some of the things I heard tonight. But I think more importantly, I want to recognize that we lost a Montclair giant in John Sterling a couple of weeks ago, first African American fireman for the township. His family did request privacy, but I think we as a township in this council need to figure out a way to make sure that he is honored in a proper manner. Mr. Sterling was a, just a gentleman and someone who I know my dad even looked up to as someone who grew up in this town, just because of the way he represented African American men in a position in the township leadership. So, you know, it's a great loss. He lived a long life. Mr. Scott, who was his neighbor, was very instrumental in making sure that if there was anything that the family wanted out of the township, that we be aware. And so they asked for privacy. So that's why we did not write a proclamation. So, but I did have a lot of conversations with some of the firemen in town who all just had a real appreciation for a man who was a gentle giant. But we will make sure that we honor him in a proper way.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Russo? Councilman Classic, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. I was just getting a text from Marcia Almeida, who's a very active resident of Dominican background, reminding me that it's Dominican Republic Independence Day end of February. She'd like us to recognize that. So I think we ought to plan something there where we raise a flag or do something. Dominican Independence Day comes the end of February. I think it's the 23rd or 27th. So we'll follow up on that hopefully. And of course, the Year of the Tiger was celebrated the other day. And I really want to thank Congressman Andy Kim for coming up from Burlington County to make a great address to us as a Korean American who really participated in that wonderful Lunar New Year by the AAPI community. Last thing I wanted to say is that being a senior myself, I understand the frustration of a lot of seniors about things. You know, we see the time and clock ticking on our lives. And I always wanted, by the time I retired, to see a senior center. I hope we can still do something about that. But I wanted to recognize, there's a lot of talk about this tonight, criticism, but Roger Terry, our former council member and the deputy mayor at the time, around 2010, proposed that we purchase on Greenwood Avenue and Walnut Street the Senior Activities Center. It's a place that was a very large facility. It cost, would have cost a million plus, but at that time, that was a bargain, but it was just bad financial time. I think the time of 2009, 10 was bad nationally financially, but Montclair should have made the investment then. None of us who are sitting here were on the council at that time, I don't believe. But there was a possibility, and Roger Terry was the one with the foresight to say, let's buy it and let's make this our senior center. We would have had it for 12, 15 years. I want to just thank Roger for that. He's still serving on our SCAC, our Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. He didn't quit. And I'm sorry that so many people just resign when we have so much to do and work together. And I want to say again, when we passed rent control, we put a 2.5% increase for tenants, lower than anything in the general ordinance. Wasn't that something that was an advocacy for seniors by this council and the previous council? So, you know, I'm here being a friend and supporter of seniors, most of the folks on that committee, three of them who are neighbors of mine. I just cannot believe that people would leave when there's so much left yet to do. And there's so much that we have done to make Montclair a senior friendly town. And certainly I've been doing that for many, many years on the council. But I want to thank and salute Roger for that foresight and thank Roger for continuing to serve on the SCAC committee. Let's just all keep trying to work together. That's all. Get the rent control settled if we can and get seniors, if anyone wants to serve, because others have said they don't want to. Anyone wants to serve, just get your VIF, it's the Volunteer Information Form in, be online and get that in as a request to serve on SCAC. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So in closing, I'll just, you know, kind of echo a lot of the comments that my colleagues have made. You know, certainly we'll start with one of the big. Oh, Councilman Yakabels, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. You know what?
I know.
Too much, Councilman Yakabels. When I, when I vary it too much, I get the, you know, when I go in order and keep it simple, that hurts me, right? I remember all the other ones when I mix it up, but all right, thanks. Councilman Yakabels?
All good. So I wanted to say, just with regard to SCAC, I think it's unfortunate. I was, I looked back at my inbox to see, did anybody write me to express that they were frustrated or upset about the terms of the resolution? And the answer is no. So I reached out to everybody and I've asked for a conversation. If the decision for folks who are on SCAC is that they think they'll serve the community better in advocacy positions outside of an advisory role for the council, then I accept that. And I think, you know, we'll, we'll benefit as a community overall from that. But I do think it was unfortunate how it transpired. And learning about everyone's frustration, you know, essentially with a, with a letter and then through the press and then by a, you know, a sequence of calls tonight, didn't give us the opportunity to address the concerns or potentially correct, you know, or do something about it to work something out. So I'm just, I'm really saddened by how that all went down. In terms of rent control, you know, I've seen the latest draft where if it's in black, it means that both parties have agreed to the text. If it's in red, it means they haven't agreed on those points. And the red's about 5% or less. 95% of the, of this draft is in black, meaning they've agreed on 95% or more. And to me, it would be absolutely absurd and a shame if we couldn't codify that 95% into law. And we would revert to the old, the older ordinance that neither party thinks is as good as it could be. And so I'd like to see us, you know, I'd like to see both parties get back to the table. And, you know, that last, that last couple of meters to get to the finish line, that last 5%, those last couple of points, that's always going to be the hardest part. And I really, really want to encourage all parties to, to, to come with a spirit of compromise. We're too small of a town, too small of a community to be this, you know, backed into our corners and this defensive and unmovable from our positions. There's, it's, there's so much on the table here, so much at stake. I don't think it's worth risking going to a referendum and risking it all. And if we lost, we'd lose the ability to legislate on this issue for years. And there goes affordability for the town. So I really, really strongly want to encourage all parties to finalize these few pieces. And if there are one or two or three outstanding pieces that you can't finalize, then we as a council should step in and finalize those pieces and let the chips fall in terms of, you know, how our folks feel about it, they feel about it, and they can convey or express their, their views after that. But I just want to make sure, you know, we do everything we can and want to ask that cooler heads prevail and we return to the table to compromise. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. Again, summarizing a lot of what my council colleagues have said, I absolutely would just touch on all the, some of the pieces that we heard already. You know, you know, starting where Councilman ended, I'd say, you know, rent control, absolutely concur. You know, we all hope and I think push that there's an agreement made. And certainly, as I noted before, one of the big reasons pushed both parties to come together. I will just note, you know, and understanding and listening in on at least some of those conversations that they had. I am mindful that when you come to the table and if some of the tenants advocates who have gone through the process know this, Mr. Scott being one of them is still, still on, I'm sure. You know, there are so many pieces that the tenant advocates did concede on. I think Mitch noted that in this meeting. I am mindful of, you know, it is, it is maybe not reasonable to expect that if you go 95% of the way and there's 5% left that you just can't live with, that we need to come in and say, hey, you got to figure out a way to go halfway on that last part as well. So I'm mindful of it's in totality and all things have to be considered. I've said it from the start, support absolutely an affordable Montclair in all different ways. And I think this is a big part of it in terms of affordability, for sure. I think it is important that both parties come together and hopefully, you know, finalize something, you know. But I am mindful of, as we often hear in, in the conversation, maybe nationwide or otherwise, there can be two sides, but both sides do not have to be equal. And certainly I understand, you know, where, where each has come from and how far each has gone or not. So I think in that dynamic, you know, there's a big urgency here. And certainly I do think that if the public, it needs to go for referendum and the public decide, are we a community that supports this, supports the diversity that we often celebrate? It requires action. And, you know, I would hope that the residents would agree with that and of course adopt rent control. So I think we'll know a lot more in the next short timeframe that it takes clerk and others to certify and move forward. And certainly if there's an agreement that can be made, it will be presented to us. And if not, I think we, you know, we go to the voters and leave it to the community and we decide as a community who we are and what we represent. Couple other pieces that I think are, just updates quickly on a great conversation around the Essex Hudson Greenway, switching topics in terms of some of the ongoing work that's happening there. Some of the pieces delayed at the state level, but we are happy to see that a lot of what we're working on is in line with what's happening there in terms of some of the conversations we're having in town of incorporating some of those bike access routes to what would be the start point of that Essex Hudson Greenway in conversations, again, with some of the, the big players who've been working on it for a long time now. You know, we're well positioned in that. So just kudos to my colleagues and everybody, staff as well, for being kind of ahead of that piece. And it seems we're ahead of the game as to where they are broadly on the state level. So good stuff there. Do also want to note, you know, as it was mentioned and we saw tonight, you know, I really appreciate the clergy coming on today and having a conversation. I said it, you know, while they were speaking with us directly. But you don't want to say it again. I think it's, it's important. It's important to hear the thoughts that they wanted to share and certainly be able to express, you know, some of the limitations that we face and the frustrations that we have and certainly that they've seen firsthand and have themselves. So important and appreciated, as I said. Yes, it was great to celebrate the Lunar New Year and I want to say fun. I know that we're all smiling. Councilman Schleger, I see you smiling because I think you were standing next to me as we were both deciding if we were jumping in the dragons and, you know, doing, doing some of the dancing. But we decided smartly against that, but it was still a great celebration. And, you know, it was a wonderful opportunity. You know, I know at least one of my little guys was awake to be able to partake and have some fun there in that celebration. And I think what we're all about to look at cultural diversity and to look at what we often speak about in terms of celebrating. And I hope we get to the place, as I said in my remarks, welcoming everyone to, to Montclair, who wasn't from Montclair that day. Really just an opportunity to say, you know, the, the strength that we have is in our diversity. And certainly as we see at the national level, especially division and in continuing division growing, you know, I think we are indicative despite different views at times of how diversity is important. And it's, it is our strength and we need to keep fighting for that because it is not a given that that will prevail, that that thinking will prevail at any level. And we've got to keep pushing there. With that, and we talk about history, when we talked about at, at the Lunar New Year celebration, some of the curriculum pieces that, that allow us to properly teach history with regard to AAPI contributions, et cetera. It's, I think, also important to note that, you know, specifically when we look at Black History Month, you know, to also celebrate and honor that it is not about one month. And we talk about the contributions that African Americans have made to, to this country and to the world. It's, it's a constant conversation and it's a constant interface and explanation of the great pieces that have, that have occurred and contributions that have been made. And I think it's on all of us to make sure that as part of any celebration that we do for honoring in a month, we need to understand that the real honoring is through fighting for change that, that embeds it in our true fabric and history. So I wanted to note that as well. And with that, want to thank all my colleagues for the work that you continue to do. Appreciate it. And thank everyone for their, their time tonight. We'll move forward with those items on the agenda at the next meeting. Thank you, everybody. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Moved and seconded as always by everyone, I'm sure.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Night, everybody. Good night.